Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Michigan City Park Board's special meeting for July 8th, 2020. Can you please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the power of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Shannon, can you call the roll?
Mr. Lachford?
Here.
Mr. Freeze?
Here.
Mr. Lang?
Here.
Ms. Asfar?
Here.
All right, we're here tonight to, for one item, to consider the Washington Park fees. So I will open it to discussion for Shannon or Ed, if you'd like to maybe give a little background of why we're here tonight.
I will. As I notified you earlier, we would like to increase the amount to park at Washington
Testing. We would like to increase the amount of money to get into Washington Park. As you know, I told you it was $8 and we'd like to go to $12. After further review, I think I spoke with you before the Fourth of July weekend, I was out there most of the weekend on the mornings and the evenings. And after seeing what I saw, I'm going to ask you for a further increase because I'm pretty sure that we're going to need to step up security. We need more presence of police. We need more presence of the firemen. We don't have lifeguards, so we're actually going to need some way to stop any drowning. I had people that were going past the buoys and I couldn't bring them in with the loudspeaker or the firemen. There were times when I needed the police, not for an altercation, but I did need the police for backup on jet skis, jet ski issues. So I'm going to ask you tonight if we can have an increase from what I asked you before, from $12 to $15 per parking and for a double car with trailer, for a car with trailer, $30 because of that presence of the police is very important. We're the only park, other than the National Park, to serve alcohol and that brings in, that brings in a group of people that stopped Michigan City people from enjoying the park. I got a lot of feedback that Michigan City people aren't able to enjoy their own park. And I welcome out-of-towners, but with such a low price and with the alcohol being allowed, it brings in a group of people that Michigan City people don't want to visit our park, their own park.
Thank you, Ed. Any other comments?
President, I'm all for raising the prices. I think $8 is very low. I know if we go just a little further north, now I don't know what they have this year, but New Buffalo last year was $5 for the first three hours. And if you were in there over there, they had a hefty fine, I think it was $50 and $25 every day after that. And I believe all day was $12. I agree on the $30 for RVs or trailers, but I can't see doubling our cost to $15. I could see 10 or 12, but not 15. Shannon, what do we charge for buses now?
It's $8 per car, 15 for anything larger. Our logic there is if you're selling a parking space for $10 and a vehicle comes in and takes two, it should be 20. So that's why it's 15 and 30 or 10 and 20.
Now, another reason, Phil and everyone else, Shannon does have to go get singles quite often to bring back, but having, having, uh... having the price at $12 is maybe equal to some of the other cities and maybe even more, but we don't charge our people from the city. People that are charging less charge the people who live in their city. So as of now, they're all parking for no charge and that could be money that we could be gaining if we charged either the people who live here or raising the price for the out-of-town people.
I understand that, but are we driving people away if we go from 8 to 15? That's almost a 100% increase. And I'm just worrying, I understand Ed, what you're saying. I understand that completely. I, I want to make sure that we are going to be viable, that the park department is not turning people away simply because the price has become too high. Now, I don't know unless you do something like that to see what kind of results you're going to get. I do know, and as you know, we've had a tremendous influx of people from the Chicago area because the beaches there have been closed. And so people have been coming over here and, and I realize that there, when you look at that and you go, yes, there is, is money to be made. There is no doubt about that. And, and I would be the last person to say, no, we do not want to make money. Yes, we do, but I, I'm not sure. Would we be driving people away if it looks like and is almost a 100% increase? I don't know.
I, I think that the people will be driving away some, but I think the people we will be driving away are the ones that may not be suitable for the park and the Michigan City people will have room to go.
And I understand exactly what you're saying because I heard people say, it is so crowded down there that I can't bring my family down anywhere because there's no room. So I mean, there's that possibility. I, I think if we do that, we'll just have to wait and see and if it, if it turns out to be a negative response, then we, we can make that change. I mean, I have no problem with that except for the fact that if people are looking at 100% increase and that's just an awful lot to me.
Just wanted to, just wanted to make a comment regarding the increase. I, I support and I would recommend to the board from a liability standpoint. I've been in and out of that park numerous times, as we all have, and there has to be more police presence there. And if we can prevent something from happening, it could save the city and the park department a lot of money from a liability standpoint. So you may have an increase now, but if you have more police presence and firemen presence, just first responders in general, it could, it could be the difference between millions of dollars. Who knows, right? So that's something to keep in mind as well. But just from the standpoint of a liability issue, as your attorney, I, I would recommend the increase just so that we could afford having first responders there. Just a comment to keep in mind.
I think also to reiterate on that, not only more police, but I think the dune buggies are nice, but I really think that police cars, I've been involved with security, securing money at a large scale, and I think police cars are very important. Police cars are very important. Now, Long Beach, as I was growing up, had tough summers and they would deputize men that they could trust, men that wouldn't cost so much money and, and it wouldn't cost as much, but they had numbers. And I think that's very important because if there was an altercation at Washington Park, the police do their job well, don't get me wrong, but they may be four of them doing their job well over here and that's a large area to cover. So the presence of a car, whether there's a policeman in it or not, or two or three for every parking lot is very important. And also, I want to, I want to say also that my worry at Washington Park was, was unbelievable when I got out there and I saw how many people were out past the buoys and how many jet skis were close to them. And I'm not here trying to be Mr. Safety Man, but with no lifeguards, it's going to be very bad. I don't know, we maybe can't afford a lot of things, but we cannot afford to have any accidents at this point, I think, as a city. Go ahead, sure. How many officers do you have on duty on a weekend? I saw six that helped close it down and six of them closing it down was probably enough because they were actively closing it down by locking gates, turning their lights on, riding around and telling people it's time to go. But that was only from quarter to nine until everybody left. During the process of the day, I'm not saying they aren't doing their job, they're doing a great job, but they're not, there's no presence. And that, that gives people the right to bring their, their alcohol in and, uh, make it difficult for the people of Michigan City to enjoy it because the music gets a little loud, every drink they drink, the music goes up a little bit more. And it's just not, it's the kind of park that I think our people want to visit. I didn't see, I know a lot of people in Michigan City and I didn't see anybody I knew.
Mr. President, if I could just interject, Mr. Shin stated there were six police officers down there, but those were extra patrols put on for the Fourth of July weekend. So there is only one dedicated officer to Washington Park from 10 to 6 on a normal schedule. Just so you're not, so you're clear that there's not six officers down in Washington Park. There's one that patrols the beach on ATV and then if there is an emergency, we call 911 and they come in from the city.
Thank you for clarifying that. I want to make sure we're not bringing in multiple issues here. Considering the park fee is one thing, and now we've kind of blended that into police presence. And unless you're saying that if we're, if it's at $10, we can increase police presence by X, if it's $12, we can increase it by X, then I, I don't know if we should combine the conversation because it's really not relevant in terms of the price that we're charging. That's just my opinion. Unless someone here from the administration can say, if you raise it to 15, we're going to give you four dedicated police officers. If you leave it at eight, you're not going to get any. Unless we have that sort of commitment, I, I don't, we can't entertain that argument. Even though all the concerns are valid, at least in my mind, when I'm evaluating the cost of admission, dangling some other attribute or element that may or may not come about because of the price, I don't see how that's relevant to the price of admission. That's my opinion. As valid as the concern may be.
I would say my thoughts on, on the sole issue of the increase of the daily parking fees, I'm supportive of that increase. I think at the very least it will make us at least closer to what surrounding areas do. And it would generate significant more revenue for our park department. Now, if it turns out that the increase deters those numbers and we're not generating that same amount of revenue, then I think we need to get back together and rediscuss that. But I am supportive of increasing the price. I don't want to get into the singles and the issue with change, but that is an issue of today and I don't want to set a price that would require more work and more change. I'm not sure what I'm doing to make all that feedback. I think I'm loud enough.
Us there can guarantee that additional revenue generated will go to that exact purpose. At this point, I think it's just simple. So strictly speaking on increasing prices, I feel we're needing to do that. $8 is a steal, so fed up to four several times.
I would agree. I also want everyone to know, just if we raise, if we raise the price to 8, 10, 12, 15, 20, whatever it is, it's still a first-come, first-served situation. So if the price doesn't deter, whoever comes first gets in, whether you, from Michigan City, you pay the fee. So just to make everyone aware of that situation. Any other comments from the board or Shannon?
I just have one comment regarding change. It doesn't matter what denomination that the board decides on tonight, we can make that work. We just had such a large influx of people this year due to the beaches being closed, due to COVID, due to beach erosion in Michigan and Illinois, that we didn't have enough. But we can address that through the city council and increase that, which we planned on doing, but then all the meetings shut down, it was non-essential. So I just don't want your decision to be based on how many singles we can provide.
Thank you, Shannon.
You're welcome.
If there are no other comments from the board, any comments from the public?
Yes, yes. I would like to comment that the reason we are making the increase is for more police presence and, and just, and to stop any chance of a drowning. I mean, I, I see that you're saying it's two different things, but I just want it to be on record that it isn't the reason so we can make money to buy T-shirts and new dune buggies or anything like that. The reason is to increase it, to make it safer for Michigan City.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mack?
This subject has been spoken of by plenty of council members and I could speak for the will of the council that $15 is a fair minimum that we would agree on as a price, as a price for, for admissions. And especially with our new dynamic of COVID in different places, the demand for our product is higher. The demand for our product has always been there, the supply of our product with the limited amount of parking that we have and the limited window that we actually charge. I just cannot imagine a dollar amount even comparable to actual Chicago parking would create a scenario where we would find one empty parking spot ever in that parking lot. What, what could be reduced from a fee structure would be added on to with our people that have already bought tickets and would probably increase the value of our seasonal tickets, just that movement in and of itself. And with that, so if we replace one local resident and, you know, that's almost like two of the previous ones. So just from a supply and demand, I can't think of a possible way where $15 per car would leave one empty parking space in that place. And with the advent of what's coming in the future, the national parks, I don't see that demand for our product diminishing whatsoever. So the will of the council and every councilman I spoke to is 100% behind at least a $15 price there.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Any other comments or questions before we open it up to the public?
Ed, I just have one, one other question, just a clarification. You said if we go to this 15, is that going to guarantee that we will have a greater police presence down there?
Oh, yeah.
That is a guarantee?
That is a guarantee.
Okay, that's good enough for me. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. City Councilman Large Don Pruspolinski. First thing I'd like to do is welcome our new superintendent, Mr. Shin. I have 100% confidence that he's going to do a fantastic job. And if you ever need any assistance from the city council, feel free to give me a call, okay? I want to comment on the parking fee proposal this evening. And basically, I'm not going to start with $2. I'm not going to start with $5, going up to 10. I'm going to talk $15 increase. And I, and I have called around to the different cities, went online and, you know, Bridgeman, Michigan, which I was just up there the other day, and their beach is small and their parking lot, I don't even know if they can get 100 cars in their little parking lot. But anyway, they're charging $11 to $12 right now. And they don't have the maintenance crew that we have to have on a Saturday morning or a Monday morning to come down there and clean the mess up. That's all there is down there in Washington Park. And then you have the New Buffalo, they charge $10, $12 a vehicle. And the other little cities, St. Joe, Michigan, I think they're right in the same realm, $10 to $12 a vehicle. So it's not, it's not uncommon for cities and even little cities, half our size, to charge visitors that want to come and enjoy what we have here on Lake Michigan. I mean, this is not, there's nowhere else in the state of Indiana that you can go and enjoy a, a weekend or an afternoon on a beach like this. My son Joey lives in Indianapolis now, went to Butler University and for the last six years, he used to bring six guys up here and they all live in Indy and they never saw Lake Michigan until they started coming up here and what a beautiful beach it is. But there's only one way that you keep something, an asset like that, beautiful, and that's you got to have the resources to keep it clean. You got to have the resources to keep it safe. You have to have the resources to buy the tools that the maintenance department needs to come down there and clean that facility every Saturday, every Sunday, every holiday. So if it goes up $2, take for example, you get 100 cars that come through the gate. So if you raise it $2, you're going to make 200 bucks on 100 cars, okay? So what's $200 going to do to the park department? Buy another roll of garbage bags to put in the garbage cans down in the beach? It's basically nothing. If you go $5 on 100 cars, I should say if you go to $12 on 100 cars, you're increasing it by $5, so you're making an additional $500 on those 100 cars, which now we're talking, starting to talk a little bit of money. Now, if you raise it to $15, which is $7 on 100 cars, that's $700 that you're taking in. So take for example, Saturday afternoon, I was down at Federals Alley with my son and he was kind of beating me up, making me exercise with him, but anyway, I survived. And I walked around the parking area and there was 80 cars, and this is 11:30 in the morning, there were 80 cars there already from out of state, not out of Michigan City, but from out of state, Michigan, Illinois, Missouri, you know, what have you. So right there, that almost makes up your $700 if you had a $7 increase to $15, despite all the other parking lots that were filled up. And by the end of the day, down in Federals Alley, all the grass area that they had roped off, that was three-quarters filled with cars. And I can guarantee you, three-quarters of those cars were probably from out of town because people from Michigan City were probably saying, no, 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 I'm not going down there today. But those are just my points, is that $15 will not hurt the people that are coming here to enjoy the Michigan City lakefront. Those people are destined to come here and they're going to come here. Chicago, you have the Indiana beach that is already filled up with those people. You probably have the Portage beaches that are filled up with those people. And those people are coming here and they're filling up our beach. And I don't have any problem with those people coming here, have no problem whatsoever. So I don't see the mayor of Chicago opening up her beaches this summer with the COVID-19. I think she's more interested in saving lives and saving the public over there than she is opening up beaches for people to swim in. So those people are going to go somewhere and I guarantee you, they're coming to Michigan City. Now, if we take a look and we go, well, you know, you know, this is too much, you know, this is too much. But if we decide next year that, and I don't know how we keep track of the parking, okay, you got it, okay. So if you see where there's a dramatic decrease in parking revenue for some particular reason, you can say, well, okay, we'll go from 15 and we'll drop it to 12 and see if that, you know, helps out. But I just think that the board will be missing a major opportunity to gain financial help in the department and to move forward in that direction. So I support Mr. Shin, the superintendent, with $15 right off the bat and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Yes, Shannon?
Just as a point of reference for everyone, on the three-day holiday weekend, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, we had 6,500 out-of-state cars enter and park in Washington Park.
Shannon, do you know how many total cars? What was, as a percentage, what is 6,500 of the total? Did that represent 70%, 80%, 60%? How many total cars came in over the three days?
I'm going to say it was probably 85. But...
Thank you. Any other?
I think we asked.
Any other comments from the public? All right. Yes, please. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, board members, Wayne Perry, Mayor of Michigan City, welcome. First, it's important that you know that this, this idea originated with me. I feel myself to be responsible for the financial condition of Michigan City as well as its future. Michigan City has a $51 million budget and at $51 million, we are a corporation and we need to act like a corporation. We have not been doing that. We're not doing well. We're selling our product way too low. And it's also important that you know that here tonight is just the beginning. You just unfortunately are the first shot across the bow. It's my intention to raise rates all across the board because Michigan City has not made enough money. We're giving our beautiful town away. Mr. Shin and I converse daily. So we've looked at this and there are a lot of reasons that I, I think this is appropriate. I have, since the coronavirus has been here and our beach has been the only one open, I've been down there every day. I've seen what goes on. Unless I misheard, Ms. Eason, I believe she told me that the, two days over the Fourth of July weekend, the Third and Fourth, we made record profits in our parking. Is that pretty much correct? Okay, but we also are drawing, excuse me, we're also drawing a different group of people here than we've ever had. We're drawing people that don't take care of things. I, I'm hands-on, I get my hands dirty. When I went down to the beach, I was down the beach every day. I looked at what went on on the beach. We have grills, we have cookers, we have things that, that we're going to have to address because they've never been allowed before and they're not going to be allowed now. We have people that, when they leave a place that's trashed, I go as far as to look inside the portable toilets when I'm down there. They were, they were trashed very quickly. Everything is changing now. Also, I will say... Also, I will say that every day that I was down at the beach, I met people who had never been to our beach, that were from Illinois or from Michigan because they didn't have a beach. And they were so impressed with our beach, they told me, we're coming back. This is going to be our beach. So things are changing. We have to change with it. We have to make money in this town. We haven't been making money enough. And everything costs money. This is going to cost more. Maintenance is going to go up. We are going to have to have more policemen there. We will have more policemen because it's an unruly crowd. But this, there's two sides to that coin. We're making a lot more money, but I'm also, and this is not a point that we're here about tonight, I'm also watching the COVID rates because we're dealing with two threats here. We're dealing with the COVID virus and we're dealing with the financial future of Michigan City, which because of our lost revenues from blue chip, our delayed revenues from property tax, we are not doing well. So I welcome the extra money, but I am fearful of the health potential. I am watching it and I will keep you advised because that's my job. But I believe that this is important. And I was the one that proposed initially $15 because I feel this, we have to streamline things. We have to get people through. And we did that with our new beach pass, our new parking pass. When we went to scanners, we were doing them in 90 seconds rather than five to 10 minutes. And the reason I thought of $15 is it's easy. Most people, if they're going away for a weekend, they're carrying a 20. They give you a 20, you give them five back, boom, they're done. We're not handling a lot of bills that can cause mistakes and also create delays. I really do believe in my heart that this is important, this is good for Michigan City. And what it will do is if we lose visitors, they'll be the visitors that we don't want anyway. They're the people that don't take care of things. And I've seen it. This is really, our beach population, our visitor population on weekends, I think is going to continue to rise. Because like we've said many times, we are diamond in the rough. We are an undiscovered treasure here. But now, thanks to the COVID, good or bad, we have been discovered. And it's going to be a different arena that we are in from now on. And I think this, I truly think this is necessary. But we have to make other changes. And that's not, one that I just want to throw out, not why we're here tonight. But I noticed when the zoo opened up. And again, the reason we do this, we have too many departments that lose money. The park department has to foot the bill for the zoo. That's tough. The zoo is a landmark. Some landmarks, some services don't make money. But we're going to keep the zoo. We're not going to get rid of the zoo. But we have to make things work. The day the zoo opened up, I saw a young family go in and they couldn't find parking. They had to be directed through the main gate. And I stood there and I thought, a husband, a wife, and two small children. They pay $8 to get in the gate. And I asked that the gate be open and I was told by park worker, no, they have to go through gate one. And I said, well, then if they're just going to the zoo, why do they have to pay $8 at gate one? Well, because they have access to everything. They have access to the lake, the splash pad, and the zoo. Well, the splash pad's not open. Hasn't been open for a couple of years. So now you're only down to two. But nonetheless, $8 to get in the gate, they paid $8 per adult. That's another 16, that's 24. And they paid $6 for each of the two small children. So they paid $36 to make a trip to the zoo. And that, I think, is wrong. Young families shouldn't be struggling. They should be able to enjoy our facility, young Michigan City families. And I think we're going to have to make multiple changes. Unfortunately, you're the pioneers in this. You're the first ones that I've approached on this. I think we need to take a look at making our rates affordable in areas where they need to be affordable for our Michigan City people. We take care of our people first. And this $15 an hour in my mind is for two purposes. It's to make money and it's to protect our property. Which our beach was pretty well, and Shannon can, Ms. Eason can attest to that. Our maintenance costs went way up. We were sanitizing the beach after dark. We had extra materials for cleanup. We had longer hours. Things are changing and they're beyond our control because I cannot open the beaches of Michigan City and close the beach to Illinois people or Michigan. That's against the law. I open the beach because people need to get out. This COVID is making people crazy by being locked down too long. But along with opening the beach to our people, I open it up to the rest of the world too. And I think we need to consider that. I really do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments from the public?
I have a comment, but it's not related to this item. So I prefer to just wait until you're finished with this particular item.
Okay, sure. All right, board, any recommendations or motions on the proposal to increase parking fees in Washington Park?
Mr. President, just a comment. I really don't like the fact that we're going to increase 100%, but there were some very valid explanations and arguments for the increase to $15. I've been down to the park almost every day. I was down today, as a matter of fact, great crowd. Anyhow, I changed my mind and I will be in favor of this, but I just want to make a comment that I'd like to have some statistics after this year and see exactly how we fare on this raise. I know it's needed. It just bothers me we're going to increase it 100%. Anyhow, that's my comment.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I would ask if the board does choose to increase the parking fees, that you set a date for it to begin because it will take some time, change our signage, our website, our point-of-sale systems. So if you vote on something tonight, I can't have that happen immediately.
In terms of thinking that an increase will be voted on and probably approved, we're just debating on what that amount is. What is the timeframe that you would need between tonight and implementation? So we can include that in the motion.
I would say I could have it ready for Friday. So we've got Friday on the weekend, which is our top dollar days.
Thank you.
So I don't know what the date is Thursday, but I can get it done by then.
This Friday?
Not this Friday.
Next Friday.
I have a 17. Any other comments from the board? Or do we have, what's the pleasure of the board? Any motions to increase the rate? Want to keep it the same?
I would so move that we increase the Washington Park parking fees rate for non-residents from $8 a day for cars and motorcycles to $15 a day. And from $15 a day for, again, visitors out of state, out of county, out of city residents, for trailers, motorhomes, and buses, from $15 a day to $30 a day. And that would be effective Friday, July 17.
Could you amend your motion to stickered or non-stickered? I think that'd probably be the most appropriate. Because if someone comes in and they're a resident.
Right. Yes, I would amend my motion to state for non-stickered vehicles. And stickers are available to all Michigan City residents.
Thank you. That was your motion, yes?
Oh, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion carries.
I would like to make one comment, and not in relation to the fees, but it's been mentioned many times, what's gone on there over the last few weekends. And I just wanted to give kudos to the park department staff for their efforts in maintaining the type of high-quality conditions that they did under those trying conditions. It's a tribute to your leadership. So if you could pass along some kudos, that'd be great. All right, any comments from the public tonight?
Earl Cunningham, I'm here this evening to share something that is just the opposite. It's not going to be much expense, maybe none at all for the park department. But it's something that is in need because of the growing utilization of the pickleball courts. Virtually, the Michigan City right now, as far as I know in the city, there are three pickleball courts. They're all on the Elston tennis courts, which Marquette will start using for tennis pretty quickly. So they're not available once that starts. After some discussion, someone said, well, have you looked at the skating rink? Said, no, but I grabbed a large 300-foot tape and went down there and measured it out. And you now have an aerial view of that skating rink facility. And it's virtually big enough that we could put four pickleball courts in there without any crowding in any way, shape, or form. Literally, it's 144 feet across the top of that page. We don't need anywhere near that. And we would have four courts. A pickleball court's only 20 feet wide, but 10 feet in between so that if people run off two side-by-side courts, we're not smashing into each other instantly. And if you look right down the center of the page, I put some X's on there. That's what we call the net line. In the middle of the page, you see a C. That's the center going north and south and east and west both. We would lay the courts out from there. The one problem that I see is that there are these planter boxes and they're sitting there apparently for storage. They use them for some events. They're actually, right now, the posts on the back of those are facing out instead of in. If they were reversed, just flipped those around, we could literally use some of those. We wouldn't need all of them. But we could use some of those and attach a temporary fence, like a snow fence, plastic snow fence, wood snow fence, whatever's available. Because we're just trying to stop a plastic pickleball that's about the size of a baseball. Pretty lightweight. It's not going to do any damage if it hits a fence. But you don't want them flying all over the parking lot either. Fastest-growing sport in the world right now. It's growing like crazy here. One year ago, when the racquetball club closed, there were about 30 of us playing consistently at 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock in the morning there. We got no notice. Within 24 hours, we had moved our operation from the racquetball facility to the Michigan City Y, who was looking for members badly at that point in time as well. And the Y purchased the tape. And we literally laid down a blue masking tape there as our court lines. On the outside court, we'll need twice as much tape so that we can lay down on both sides of a two-inch line and we'll paint the court, which is what we did at Elston. I've got a crew of six or eight guys that can do this on their own. We've already done it. We did it inside. We've done it outside. The obstacle for permanent play is the same everywhere. If you don't have a dedicated facility with permanent pickleball nets, you've got to carry your own net. About half the size of a golf bag. You put the net together in five minutes, take the net down in five minutes. They're less than 100 bucks for a good one. Pickleball players have no problem buying those. So this is just a proposal. I don't expect any action tonight. I know it's not on the agenda. But I wanted to give you some input as to how we could use a facility that's not being used at all right now and add some value for the park department. I think the mayor just left, but it's great for a brand-new park department director, superintendent, and a brand-new mayor because we'll do the work. What we're not going to do is come down there and scrape the weeds off and clean the court up, but we'll paint it if it's cleaned up. That's what it comes down to. Maintenance, when they're slowed down on something, you get a week when it's not 100 degrees. Everybody doesn't have to be at the beach. Probably some weed spray, kill the weeds, scrape them off and blow it, use a blower. You can do that in a couple of hours, I would think, based on what they did at Elston. There are six tennis courts there. It's actually a little bigger facility. It's not a perfect surface. It's not as smooth as this floor. But as Bruce will tell you, sometimes there's some excitement in getting that weird bounce. We're playing in my driveway right now. Tomorrow will be our 100th day because everything was shut down. And we've been playing pickleball, singles only because we couldn't social distance in doubles. Most of this is set up, I mean, realistically, this is for doubles. You can play singles on a court like this, but 20 feet wide, old guys like us, pretty hard for us to cover it anymore. Happens pretty fast. What they, the women will do this all the time. They play what they call skinny singles. So they'll play on half of that double score. You can see that line going down the center. That's where you serve candy corn. Well, in skinny singles, you just serve straight ahead. And there's people that are playing skinny singles where two women, 70 years old, can go out there and hit the ball in that 10-foot area and take a couple of quick steps, run a little bit, get some exercise. And that's why it's such a good sport because men and women alike, all ages can play. My granddaughters were just here, eight and 10 years old from Minnesota. Played for 45 minutes to an hour in my driveway. And it's, as Bruce, he just started recently. He'll tell you, it's almost addictive. It's a unique sport. I've been a tennis player for 50 years. And if somebody forced me to make a decision whether I give up tennis or pickleball, I would have to give up tennis. Because the friends I've made do pickleball, the fact that I can play with men and women, all ages, I just think it's a sport of the future. It's going to be around a long time. It will be in the Olympics shortly. There's no question I'm right. There's national championships paying hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's a, you go on, if you haven't done it, go on YouTube and just look for pickleball and you'll see some fantastic action. There's national championship tournaments with guys that, and a lot of former tennis players that are 19, 20, 21 years old are switching over to pickleball. And they've turned it into an unbelievable sport, but it's still something you can do when you're 70, 75. Some of you remember the name Virgil Sweet. He's, I think, '92 or '93. He's still hitting it around down there in Florida. And so it's an opportunity where we can take a facility that is being utilized for nothing except storage right now. Obviously, we don't need it in the winter when you need a skate rink. All of our stuff would be gone. Wouldn't bother anything. So it's not, I'm sorry I didn't have enough of these. Anybody that didn't get one tonight, find somebody that's got one. Shannon's got one, she'll get them out to you. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Any questions tonight?
I just have one, Earl. Do you use the same racket as tennis?
No, it's about twice the size of a table tennis paddle. The best description I can give you, and I've played virtually every racket sport imaginable, it's like playing table tennis and you're standing on a table. The balls come at your feet. You've got to get down, try to scoop them up. You can hit it in the air or on the bounce, just like in tennis, after the first serve. I serve it, I have to serve underhand. You've got to shot back. To me, I have to let bounce. After that, it's free for all. So that's why, no matter what age you are, you can get it started. It's an easy game to learn. Bruce, what did it take you? Half hour before you said? He came out and said, I'll try it. Half hour, he was playing competitively. Now he's playing real competitively. It's, the only people that can't do it realistically are people that have had hip or knee replacements and that didn't heal real well. We've got a lot of people that are playing that have had back surgery, that have had hip replacements, knee replacements. But those are the ones that went well. If the surgery didn't go so well, you're probably not going to take that risk. Cheap, you can buy a brand-new paddle for $30, $40. The expensive ones, there's a factory in Niles, Michigan called Paddle Tech. You can go up there right now and they have what they call seconds. They're like $100 paddles. You can buy them for 50. Most expensive paddle I think I've seen on Facebook or on the internet is like $129. I've had the same paddle for three years. Balls are virtually indestructible right now. We used to crack them all the time, but we found a new company called Onyx. And we've been playing with the same three balls for probably four or five weeks right now. We haven't cracked a ball yet. So the balls are four bucks apiece. So it's a very relatively cheap sport once you've got your equipment. So it's a very relatively cheap sport once you've got your equipment. Yes, sir?
Is it possible that this court may be converted into a basketball court? I'll be asked that, I'm sure.
Oh, is there enough space to turn that into basketball? Or could you do both?
Not, of course, not at the same time, but could you do both if that came about?
I don't think there's any question you could do both. You could have multiple basketball courts there. How many rims can you afford? Because you could play basketball right now, here's what I'm showing you. You see the court at the extreme right of the sheet? The court size is 44 feet. And where I drew that first line behind that, that's at about 60 feet. It's more like 80 or 90 feet in there. You could have a pretty decent, it would be a small full court. You could probably play at least two full courts going across that way.
But not, I don't mean at the same time.
Oh, no, I understand that. And here's what I would suggest, if you wanted to do both, is go down here at the other end. We could put our pickleball courts down in one color. That's what we have at the Y. We have a blue line for pickleball, and then they've got red lines for volleyball. They've got green lines for something else. Everybody just figures out which color tape you're using. And you could have a basketball court down here between, I call this first court that I marked up, Court One. So if you took one and two and said, all right, we're going to preserve that for pickleball, we could paint three and four, but you can put basketball court up there and go the other direction. I don't see any problem because here's what we learned at the Y. The basketball players, Michael comes up there and they play on the big court. I see Michael all the time at the Y. And they're in there like at 6:30, 7:00 in the morning. Pickleball players were coming in at 8:00 and going to the mirror gym, and there were never any basketball players in the mirror gym until about 10:30, 11:00. Then they'd start coming in. They don't get up that early, do they, Michael? So we never had a problem. The Y director said, this is absolutely perfect because it cost us virtually nothing. We've got all these new members paying $25, $30 a month, and you don't ask for anything. You bring your own balls, you bring your own paddles. Once the tape was done, it's the same tape we put down a year ago. We've not even replaced any of the tape yet. Now, they've been closed for a couple months, obviously, but I don't know that we would have had to had they not closed. And there were days when, at 8:00, there'd be 20 people there, and from between 8:00 and 10:30, there might be 35 or 40. And then in the afternoon, at about 4:00, there would be a different group. I call them the bangers. There's little better players, 30, 35, 40-year-olds that are thinking about going out and playing tournaments. They're coming in for a little faster game. So there was a lot of pickleball action at the Y with very little interruption for basketball. You never heard a basketball player complain about pickleball taking space at all, did you?
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Nelson, is this something that can be considered tonight under this agenda of a special meeting?
No, I would wait and agenda it and then have it available for public comment if there is any. I think we have a thorough explanation. It's a great idea. It'd just be best if it was on an agenda.
Thank you. We publish our agenda for Wednesday, but it's for, has it been sent to the news? So we can occasionally consider items, and maybe we'll consider that. Our next public meeting is a week from tonight, but we publish the agenda.
You can change your agenda anytime you want. I would just, to have some consideration, now that it's been brought up in this meeting, I think it could be discussed at the next meeting, even though it's not on the agenda. The board has the ability to amend the agenda the same day if you'd like.
Thank you, Nelson.
Mr. President, I can do a revision to the agenda and send that out tomorrow so it would be publicized. And then if I could make one comment, just to remind, we have some new board members. When we did the surveys for the 2016 master plan for Washington Park, pickleball was one of the amenities that was identified as something that the public wanted in Washington Park. So this will just kind of implement that a little sooner.
And as another sidebar from that, LaPorte is right now in their park. My understanding is they're in the process of converting tennis courts into what they call dedicated pickleball courts. So there will be permanent nets, just like there are tennis nets. Not like they have to take them down and put them up every night. And that's back into what they, it's Kestling Park, but if you go back far enough, it's called the Bill Reed Tennis Courts. In that particular section, I think they have six courts now, and they're going to keep four tennis courts and put pickleball courts back where the other two are, was my understanding. So it's being considered everywhere. I mean, New Buffalo's got dedicated pickleball courts right now. Chesterton's got, they're not dedicated, but in Chesterton, you can get away with leaving the nets out overnight. Nobody bothers them. We're not going to do that in Michigan City. Because I guarantee you, somebody's going to run off with them, and they're going to take them to the pawn shop for $5, and they cost $100. So we just break them down and put them back together.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Any other comments from the public? Good evening.
First matter, Port Authority. I'm here to also support Earl. I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it, I think it would grow very well in Michigan City. But of course, if the Park Department decides to support this, like Earl said, we will take care of a lot of the setting up of this thing. It wouldn't be any cost to the Port Authority, to the Park Board. But one thing we're going to have to consider, of course, I think, is if it is okay to do this, we're going to have to set up some rules and regulations, such as having first-come-first-serve, two-hour limits, so other people can get a chance. I mean, you can't take this court over and keep it all day so other people can't play. So those are some of the things that we'll have to consider, too. But I know what it's done for me. I mean, I'm an old man. And I'll tell you what, the exercise is phenomenal. You work up a sweat, you've got your cardio going, you've got your legs going, you've got your arms going, you've got everything going. It's a tremendous workout. It really is a good workout. And like Earl said, it's extremely addictive. I got hooked on it right away. I never played tennis. I wasn't a tennis player, so it was a little harder for me. But I'm catching on, and I'm getting better every time I play. I haven't played in so I've played some time, but I'm getting better as time goes on. There are different levels. Some people are really good, something, you know, it's like any sport. And you can play it from, like Earl was saying, you can play it from a child all the way up to 75, 80 years old. And play within your capabilities in terms of that level. And if you want to get better, you play at a little higher level. And that's what I'm doing right now. So I'm in tremendous favor of this. So I just wanted to let the Park Board know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments from the public?
I should have explained that. The normal circumstances are if, let's say there were four courts. The first 16 people to get there, they're playing. The next two people get there, usually they just stick their paddles in the fence. The first match that finishes, and you play at 9:00 or 11:00, whatever you decide you're going to have, but everybody plays the same. The first people to lose come off the court. These two people then go on that court, but the two winners now have to split sides. So you can't put the two best players together and dominate. One of them's going to lose the next game and have to sit out. So there's a constant rotation. That's why I liked it at the Y, is I met 10 new people the first day I played that didn't know them. Because you're playing with a new partner just because, next, who's next? It's, that's where the social aspect comes in. It's not like basketball, you get on and you've got five-on-five, and you play with the same five guys. You're constantly rotating. So I apologize for skipping over that. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public tonight?
Yeah, good evening, Councilman Don, President Polinsky. And I spoke to the mayor before the meeting, and this is a project and an idea that him and I are working on. So I asked him if he wanted to explain it since he was the mayor. He said, no, you can go ahead and do it because he had to go somewhere else. So, and what it deals with, and Mr. Shin alluded to it earlier, is the beach safety program that's now been implemented instead of having the lifeguards. And I don't know exactly if the board members are aware of what the police do and what the fire department does. But the way I understand it is the fire department is down at the beach from 10:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon. Okay? Monday through Friday. And then the police come on in the evening from, let me get it right, from 4:00 till 10:00 or 10:30 in the evening. And I believe that's just Saturday and Sunday. Right? Okay, good. All right. So you have the fire department there, Monday through Friday during the day. You have the police there on the weekends. Not during the week, but just on the weekends. But then they are down there at 9:00 at night to close the park down and get everybody out. And with the two officers being there or the two firemen being there, they generally stay together. The fire department has a two-man buggy, so the firemen are together. And the police department over the weekend, you know, they either have a two-man buggy or two mopeds that they're riding. But they stay together. They stay together. I suggested to the mayor that although the lifeguards are not down there, open up the lifeguard stand that's in Washington Park because generally, if something's going to happen, people are going to probably get a look at that lifeguard stand and say, okay, well, we know there's a sign that says no lifeguards. But if they see an individual, a fireman or a police officer walking around up there, the chances are, if something's happening, they're going to take off and go to that building. Well, if the fireman or the policeman needs assistance that's down there, all they have to do is call on a radio. So basically, what you're doing is you're spreading your protection out further rather than having two guys or two police officers down at Stop Two dealing with something down there. There can be one down at Washington Park at the lifeguard stand and down at Stop Two. So the mayor said that he was going to talk to the chief of police, he was going to talk to the fire chief, and get that, and probably talk to you, Mr. Shin, being the park superintendent, as far as implementing that and trying to increase the protection down at the beach. So I just want to explain that to the board. And I just wanted to make, because I had to call the police chief, and I called the fire chief to find out what the hours were that these individuals were working down there. Now, the other thing is also, is that if there is an emergency in the water and someone needs help out in the water, not every police officer, and not every, and I'm not being critical by no means, but not every, you don't not have to be able to swim to be a fireman. You don't have to be able to swim to be a police officer. So if something is going on out in the water, chances are, the police are not going to run out into the water because they're not taking their bulletproof vests off, and they're not taking their guns off of their waist and setting them down into the sand and taking off. Okay? You don't want that to happen. And same thing with the firemen. You know, if somebody can swim, chances are, they'll go in. But if they don't swim, they're not going in the water. So now it's all radio, hands, you know, bring the coast guard out, you know, this kind of operation. So I'm just, I'm not being critical, you know, I'm just wanting the board to know that the mayor is moving in that direction to get somebody up in that lifeguard stand, at least to keep an eye on to what's going on instead of being out riding around or patrolling Feder's Alley or patrolling Washington Park Number One in that regards. So the last thing I want to leave with is with the Park Department and Chris Kaufman and his crew for cleaning up the park over the Fourth of July weekend. They did a fantastic job. Thank you for, Mr. Shin, for being out here, and Shannon, for all your hard-working effort of trying to keep everything running. Because I think everything, in my eyesight, went well, and I appreciate all your hard-working effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. All right. Any comments from the Park Board tonight before we adjourn?
Yes, I just have one. Would you again give me the listing of the times that the police and the fire department are down at the, at Washington Park?
Yeah. The fire department is there, the last I was told, Mr. Lang, the last, and that was like two weeks ago, okay? You know, things may have changed since then.
Sure.
But they were there on Monday through Friday, from 10:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon. And then the police come on duty Friday and Saturday from 4:00 in the afternoon till 10:00, 10:30 at night. You know, there could be extra patrols going on, depending on what the mayor and, you know, the park administration have determined, you know, throughout the week, you know, criminal activity or whatever may be going on. But that was the last I had heard. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the board before we adjourn? If none, do we have a motion to adjourn?